Call to order, this is Riverview City Council Regular Meeting, November 3rd at 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginaga. Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Prey.
Here.
Councilmember Robbins.
Here.
Mayor Swift.
Yeah, she's coming.
Mayor Protem Webb.
Here.
Councilmember Workman.
Here.
Let the record show that Mayor Swift and Councilwoman Ginaga are excused. Tonight, we have the pledge allegiance led by Councilmember Prey, and for the last time, the invocation by Councilmember Workman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Precious Lord, we thank you for our many blessings, and we ask that you might bless our elected officials in their decision-making matters to the best of our community. Amen.
Before we get to awards and presentations, do we have any announcements, Jeff?
Yes, Your Honor, we have a couple announcements. I'll start with Recreation Department, Mr. Ty Dickman.
Yes, thank you. Just want to let everyone know this year, the night before the tree lighting, we're going to be trying to Taste of Riverview and beyond, and those tickets are on sale right now. They are $25 a person, and that is all you can eat with two drinks and a band for the night. And just to give you an idea of the food that we'll have there, the places that are already committed to be in there this year are Hungarian Rapsody, Serendipity Cakery, Pizza Populous, Bell Fountain Dave's Famous Barbecue, Red Lobster, Nothing But Cakes, the Grecian Center, Angelina's Mexican Restaurant, Red Robin, Parthenon Coney Island, Artiri King Haven, Rivergate Campus, Domad's Waffles, Oga's Kitchen, and The Sand Trap. And there's hopefully going to be a few more that are committed to us but just haven't signed up yet. So it should be a really good night, so if you can, stop in the Recreation Department or buy 'em online, the tickets for the event. Again, $25 for all you can eat and two drinks and a band. Thank you.
Your Honor, we also have, we have a pretty important day tomorrow in Riverview, and so we have Clerk Shane Harrison with her announcement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, or Mayor Protem and Council. Just a reminder to all the residents that tomorrow is Election Day. The precincts will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM for in-person voting. If you did receive an absentee ballot, you can return that to me by 8:00 PM tomorrow night. After 8:00 PM, I will lock the ballot box and your ballot will unable to be counted. If you have any questions, the Clerk's office will be available from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Feel free to give us a call.
That's it, Your Honor, for announcements.
Okay, thank you. I do have a couple that I'd like to make. First, I know it's not a proclamation, but I'd like to thank publicly Mike Pelkey for his service to the many community committees such as the School of Edu-- Board of--
Board of Education.
Board of Education, thank you. And also to the Economic Development Corporation, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority as a secretary. His family's moving on out of Riverview, so he'll be sorely missed, and I'd like to thank him for his years of service. Second one is a message written by our Councilmember Dave Prey, which expresses the sentiments of council and the city staff. It's a little bit of sad news. Christian Owen Michael Warden passed away on October 31st at age of 24. His mother, Ashley Dillon, brothers Ryan and Drayton Harusi, and sisters Brooklyn and Rosaline Dillon will always remember him as someone who approached each day with humor and grace. Christian married the love of his life, Morgan Valente, on October 25th, just days before he was called home to Christ. He was a devout Christian and found strength and solace in his face, especially during the battle with cancer. So if you could please say a prayer for the family and keep them in mind during this difficult time. Thank you for that, Dave. And that's all the announcements I have today. We'll move on to the awards and presentations and proclamations. For one, we have present certificates of recognition to the Riverview firefighters and police officers who responded to the fire at the American House on October 24th, 2025. Jeff, would you like to make this announcement and presentation?
No, that's you. You're the mayor.
I understand that, but--
Chief, would you come up and say some words, please?
I'm sure you have something prepared.
No, you do those. That's your job.
Are you sure you want to give me a microphone?
Yes.
And now, ladies and gentlemen, on October 24th at just past 10:00 PM, the call went out that there was a raging fire at the American House in South Gate. Immediately, dispatch started sending all available units. The first to arrive were, of course, police. Shortly after, fire units started arriving. The police officers that arrived first, without hesitation, entered the building, scaled the floors, and started going room to room. There was heavy fire conditions, smoke-filled hallways. They still went forward. It was impressive. It was heroic. When the fire crews got there, they assisted. Many of the residents were suffering from some type of mobility issue. So many of them not only had to be assisted out, several had to be carried out, and a few actually were carried out through the windows and lowered down that way. Within approximately 20 to 30 minutes, all 85 residents that needed help made it out safely. At the end of the evening, it was confirmed that 85 residents all got out safely, and there were absolutely zero injuries. That was incredible. It was a phenomenal feat. All in all, we had 14 fire departments and police departments that responded throughout the night. I believe the last crews ended up leaving around 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock in the morning. It's impressive, and it's an honor to be a part of everything that happened that night, to see that many communities come together for a singular need, and it was very impressive and very honorable that we're part of it and the members that we have here tonight. So with that, we do have some announcements. So, gentlemen, would you come on down? And please. Come on. You want to go first, Jeff?
Sure.
I have no doubt, this is just two shifts here, but every shift would have done the same thing, and I'm proud of the fire personnel we have and the police personnel we have. I'm going to recognize Sergeant Tome.
He's one of our newest officers. He just completed probation. Congratulations. And also here we have Officer Christopher Schramm.
Make you guys stay for a while. All right, on the fire side, we do have Sergeant Damon Sutton. Open it up. All right, firefighter Joe Strasner. And last but not least, Sergeant Dan Garnick.
Although not at the scene, we have a special person that we want to recognize, too. Our dispatchers do a wonderful job. Lieutenant O'Neil was working that night. Why don't you come on up, too, please?
And Sergeant Dave Murray, who's unable to be here tonight. He was at the scene as well.
Thanks. You would do this. You have to. You're the elect. You always do awards and presentations.
I'd like to thank you all for your heroism and acts of bravery on supporting those residents in that harrowing moments, that fine evening, or that shocking evening is the word I'm looking for. So thank you all. For two, present certificates of recognition to the 2025 Halloween decorating contest winners. Todd, would you like to come up, please?
Just in case you're not aware, Andy's out ill today and gave a little bit of short notice later this afternoon, so I'm trying to let the staff handle as best as I can.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protem. All right, we, in Riverview, in recognition of how many great houses are decorated now during the holiday season, not only Halloween, Christmas, we decided a few years back to start giving out some awards for the decorating of Halloween, and there are a lot of really spectacular houses that are decorated. And that's what we're going to do here today, is just give a little certificate of recognition. And then I was able to get donated from Sand Trap and Brewster's Ice Cream some gift cards for each of those houses for that, too. So if you are here when we call out your house, if you can come up, that would be great. And the first one that we had is 13856 Heritage, and that is Bruce and Carla Kreslin. Are they here tonight? There we go. Nice decorating, and there you go. I want you to stand up, too. All right, 17741 Fox Glenn, Jason and Amanda Bliznick. Are they here? Nope, doesn't look like they're here tonight. All right. And 14811 Stoneham, Robert Blastic. Is Robert here tonight? All right. And 17731 Corey, Kyle Spoco. Is Kyle here tonight? Yep, okay. First off, thank you, and there you go. And our last house is 13228 Longsdorf, Richard Fairley. Is Richard here tonight? And it doesn't look like it. All right, looks like I'll be doing some deliveries tomorrow. All right, thanks, guys.
Great job by all the decorators. It was great driving around the city the last couple of weeks and looking at all the decorations, and I'd like to thank all the volunteers, the three of them, I think, Suzie, Nicole--
Who else?
And Dave Prey were the judges that drove around, so if you didn't get to win, then you know who to go look for.
43, present certificates, oh, sorry, 43, present certificate of recognition for 12 years of service to City Councilman Dean Workman. Just a quick background, Dean Workman was elected to City Council November 11th, 2013. This is Councilman Workman's 12th year on City Council, and he has represented the city faithfully and honorably, and is discharging his duties of this prominent office in the best interests of all of its citizens. If I can have you come with me one last time to the front. Think to be safe, I'll put my glasses on for this one. It's a lot of reading, so. I know, first off, thank you, Dean, everything for your service. And I know Andy really wanted to be here to do this in person for you, so it's my honor to take his place. Bear with me for a moment here, okay? So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas Councilman Dean Workman has been a devoted public servant to the City of Riverview for nearly five decades, distinguished by his exceptional commitment, professionalism, and compassion for the residents he has so faithfully served. And whereas Dean first joined the City of Riverview in 1976 as a police officer answering a new call to public service after leaving the private sector, and quickly distinguished himself through hard work, integrity, and leadership. And whereas throughout his distinguished career, Dean rose through the ranks of the Riverview Police Department, earning promotions to sergeant in 1988, become the youngest person ever to achieve that rank in the city history, then to lieutenant, deputy chief, and ultimately, city chief of police in 2000, a position he held with great honor and dedication. And whereas Dean's leadership, education, and administrative skill led to his appointment as interim city manager in December 2002, and his formal selection as city manager in 2003, where he served with wisdom and fairness, ensuring that the City of Riverview continued to operate efficiently and responsibly in service to its residents. And whereas during his tenure as city manager, Dean guided Riverview through some of the most challenging times in its history, including the recession of 2008, where his vision, integrity, loyalty, discipline, compassion, and humility allowed the city to stay solvent and stable when many communities struggled to survive. And whereas it was Dean's strategic foresight, his ability to think several moves ahead, like the chess player he often described himself to be, that enabled Riverview to adapt, overcome, and emerge stronger, preserving the services, stability, and spirit that define the community today. And whereas Dean is recognized by his colleagues and residents alike as a passionate public servant, who for the majority of his adult life worked diligently and deliberately to put the interests of the city and its residents before his own, a strategic planner whose preparation and forethought inspired confidence, a fearless fighter who stood firmly against any form of injustice or bullying, and a dedicated and devoted family man to his wife, Vicki, son Rob, and his two grandchildren. And whereas after 37 years of full-time service, Dean retired in 2013, yet his commitment to his community did not end there. That same year, he was elected to Riverview City Council, continuing to give his time, talent, and expertise to the city he loves. And whereas during his years in the council, Dean has remained a steady, respected voice of experience, valued for his deep institutional knowledge, thoughtful perspective, and unwavering devotion to what is fair and right for Riverview's residents, employees alike. And whereas across 48 years of public service, Dean Workman has held nearly every leadership title possible within city government, police officer, sergeant, lieutenant, deputy chief, police chief, city manager, and councilman, a record of service and loyalty that few communities are ever privileged to witness. And whereas throughout every chapter of his professional life, Dean has exemplified the true spirit of service, balancing his demanding roles in public, safety, and city administration with steadfast devotion to his family, whose love and support has inspired and sustained him throughout his remarkable career. And whereas his career character stands as testament to the values of integrity, loyalty, and honor that define the very best of public servants, those who quietly, humbly, and consistently make their communities better by their example. So now, therefore, the mayor and city council of the City of Riverview do hereby express their profound gratitude and admiration to Councilman Dean Workman for his extraordinary service to the City of Riverview as police officer, police chief, city manager, and councilman, and extend their best wishes for continued happiness and health in the years ahead. Be it further proclaimed that November 3rd, 2025 shall be recognized in the City of Riverview as Councilman Dean Workman Day. In honor of his lasting legacy, leadership, dedication, and devotion to the City of Riverview and its people. So Dean? Personally, for me, I would like to thank you for all the support, all the words of wisdom, and really sharing and opening up what your foresight for the city going forward might be, so that those that are remaining behind have a possibility to keep the, you know, the ship floating and doing very well as it has been as a community for many, many years. So once again, thank you. We'll meet us next week. Okay. I just wanted to give it to you, man. Congratulations.
I want to thank everybody, but I didn't expect this, to be honest with you. I love Riverview. That's where I want to be. But I got to clarify something. You're only as smart as your staff, and I had a brilliant staff. And all the councils, believe it or not, before, were very good, and they were smart. So all this credit doesn't go to me, it goes to them. They're the people that are doing things around the city. They're not just sitting around complaining, they're actually doing it. So if we could, I'd like everybody out here to get a picture, so that I can have it.
We couldn't have said it better.
Your Honor, yes, I'd like to say thanks to Councilman Workman. I arrived at 2019 at the City of Riverview, which I really didn't know-- Riverview, which I really didn't know much about. And I was on fast track to learn, and Dean spent a lot of time with me, being a past city manager, and sat me down and kind of showed me where all the landmines are, and things that we had to work on and try to figure out. So, it definitely helped me to do my job, and I appreciate all that help, Dean, picking that phone up at night and answering the questions and kind of at least leading me to the information, so that I could do my job better. So, I do appreciate that, as I appreciate all of council, because council has information throughout the community that I don't have, and it's very helpful for me to have the support of all of you. And I'll be missing a big resource, but that doesn't mean he's not somewhere by the phone, so I can always call him. But thank you again, Dean.
All right. I guess we go back to business. We got 5-1 approved minutes of the 10-2025 regular city council meeting and the condensed version for publication. What's the council's wishes?
Support.
Motion by Councilwoman O'Neal, supported by Councilman Prey. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Yes.
Councilmember Prey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robbins?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Workman?
Yes.
Councilmember Ganaga?
Yes.
Okay, tonight we have no public hearings. Now is the time for public comments. Please step to the podium, give your name and address. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and please be respectful. Thank you.
Good evening. Nicole Clark, 18233 Hinton. I just wanted to say quickly, I'm humbled by the time and energy that the residents and council members have given me on this journey, and I'm ready to get to work if the residents choose it to be so. I've asked for your vote, your voice, and your partnership in this journey. When our city thrives, every neighborhood thrives, and every resident benefits. Councilman Workman, thank you. Along with everyone else, I want to thank you for your decades of service, for how freely you've given your time and advice to me and so many others, and for always sharing your thoughts and opinions. I now recommend changing your phone number. Bless you and your family.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ed Moss. I live at 18207 Belade. I'm going to significantly temper my remarks, since a lot of them, I had Mayor Swift in mind, and he's not here tonight. But the first thing I'm going to say is Halloween was absolutely fantastic. I saw more trick-or-treaters than I saw at any time in my lifetime, including when I trick-or-treated, which goes back quite a while. But the last time there was such a... Last time there was such an attendance, by my count, was about 40 years ago. So, don't want to date myself on that, but, you know, you live long enough, you're going to get to be old, and that's all there is to that. But you know what? I'm a Capricorn, so the older we get, the younger we get. So, for all you non-Capricorns out there, bear that in mind. Second thing is, I just made my comments for the last council meeting earlier today that I posted on my channel. I will include a link to the city council meeting, since I cannot include a link to my channel in the comments on YouTube and that. For future reference, and I'll bring this up more to Mayor Swift, but just so you and the council know, Mayor Pro Tem, for some reason, and I know not why, but I am a little curious, the, all the videos from the city's website of all the previous council meetings and the like, including the 2020 story on this city from a long time ago, have all either been erased or have otherwise disappeared, according to the HTTP 401 error that is found on there. So, I don't know what's going on with that, but I am kind of curious as to that. The other thing I'm very pleased about, that I just recently found out, though it's been true for a while, is the reopening of the library. It's about time. It's very sad what happened. I actually am curious, so we can prevent this again, and I'm saying this especially since I founded the Riverview Safety Initiative program. We need to keep Riverview safe, and the people of Riverview safe. So, I am actually curious as more information as to what the cause of it was. But having gone to the library earlier today, it is absolutely fantastic, in great shape, and not one bug was found by me, which is good. I have sent all of you, and I will be making more reference at a future meeting, I don't know if it'll be the next one or the first one in December, I sent you pictures of Mr. Calipori's backyard. I also sent Councilmember Prey and you, Mayor Pro Tem, pictures of Mr. Calipori's backyard from before, since you two were not on council when that occurred. It does look like he is starting to junk up, or as of that time, he was starting to junk up his backyard again, and I find it to be totally deplorable and completely unacceptable, especially given the fact that he was given six months solely because I would suspect his friend is Mayor Swift. It's absolutely ridiculous on that. The other thing, I sent all of you a video on is Mr. Calipori's assault on me on August 21 of this year, which, for all of you who were not sent that video, if you go to my YouTube channel under Shorts, it'd be August 21, Part 3, and that's Ed Moss's Living Riverview. And you can see Mr. Calipori. You can't see him literally assault me, but for him to take a piece of tree bark and to throw it at me, especially after he threatened me on July 18, 2024, to knock me out, is ridiculous. And I will not stand for this again. There are no free shoves in Riverview. There are no free bumps, and he's already bumped me twice, once on video. And now he's getting away with assault on me. He won't get away with it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see none. Move on. Tonight we have no organizational business. Is there any items that council would like to move from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Move forward. 9-1 approved budget amendment for the Finance Department. The Riverview Veterans Memorial Library approved budget amendments from the library's general fund into current library accounts on October 16, 2025. Amendments will allow for continued capital improvements, including bathroom and technology upgrades, print and digital resource purchases, and replacement of items disposed of due to a bedbug issue and staff donation storage area. What's the council's wishes?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Prey, supported by Councilwoman O'Neal. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Prey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robbins?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Webb?
Yes.
Councilmember Workman?
Yes.
Councilmember Ganaga?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Yes.
Thank you. Tonight we have no resolutions, no business under administration or ordinances. Now is the time for other business. Is there any comments anybody would like to make?
I have one. It's regarding Dean. Dean and I didn't always get along in the beginning, which is a shame, because clearly he's a very smart man. He did hire my husband years ago. We have grown very close. I just want to thank you for always taking the time to take my calls and helping me through decisions. Whether in the end we agreed or disagreed, we always respected how we got there. So, thank you.
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Ganaga?
I would just like to say to Councilman Workman as well, when I came on, it was a wild adventure going through all of the hoops we had to get here. So, I know that I came in here with a lot of assumptions and a lot of ideas and things like that, and running them past you and hearing, this you could do, this we've tried, and this, here's a resource. You were just so helpful and so giving with any of the knowledge. It really helped streamline how I could find my spot here in order to work on the team to make sure that we could get things done. So, I want to say thank you so much for all of your help, all of the phone calls, and all of the fun conversations on the side.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem?
Councilman Prey.
Well, since the last time I expressed my affection for you, when I said we didn't like each other, didn't go over real well.
Yeah, well...
I just wanted to point something out to you. A lot of people in the audience tonight, take a minute to look around at some of the lives you've touched. The lives you've touched couldn't fit in this room. So, thank you for all your years of service.
You're welcome.
That's it.
One last announcement. The 2040 Vision Plan Committee is putting together a public engagement survey, which is going to be published in the Riverview Register in the next, this coming edition. So, please, if you can take some time to look through the paper, there's a QR code that you can scan with your mobile phone camera, and it'll take you to the survey. Or there'll be a URL that you can type into a browser. And that feedback will be important for the committee as we're making our plans and decisions for moving the vision of Riverview forward into the next couple of decades. So, that's the last of my announcements. Anybody else? Councilman Robbins?
Thank you. Bear with me just a quick second here. Lot to say, so we tried to condense it all week. So, today, we celebrate the retirement of a dedicated public servant, respect a colleague and a friend. From the very beginning, Councilman Workman showed what true leadership looks like, always willing to share his expertise and insight, not to tell you how to think or how to feel, but to guide you and to find your own answers. It was very important to me. That's a rare quality, and one that has made a lasting impact on everyone who has the privilege of working alongside you. 2008 was not a good time for anybody, this country, this city, everyone. Many decisions had to be made that weren't necessarily popular, and Councilman Workman had the courage to make those calls, so the community could continue moving forward, something I don't think any of us will actually forget. Sorry. I'll be honest, our views do not always align, but what I will forever respect about you is... is that you never judged me. You saw the man I am despite where we started. And over time, that mutual respect grew into friendship that I truly value. You made a difference in this community and the lives of those around you. Congrats on your well-deserved retirement. Thank you for your years of service, for your wisdom, for your example. May it be filled with peace, purpose, and well-deserved joy. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I, again, I want to thank everybody. You all taught me, too, a lot. We had a very rocky start in the last council. And once we gelled, once we got through the issues, we started doing good work. It's time for me to leave. It's tough for me to leave, but it's time for me to leave. I have a lot of confidence in this council. I just have to say that David got past his demons, and I was just impressed with the fine young man he is, and I'm very proud to know him. Suzie is probably, you people don't know, but she's probably one of the smartest people I know. And she just sits there silently guiding, so that's good. David Prey is what I was 20, 30 years ago, and I get nothing but a charge out of him. He cares about the city, and he does a good job, and he is a bull in a china shop. Truthfully, he resembles Elmer a little bit, I got to tell you.
What the hell?
Well, you don't take any crap from anybody, and you don't care. And I love it, to be honest with you. Rita, you kept me calm as I was getting angry with some of the stupid stuff that we were hearing. As I got older, I got less patient, and you kept me calm, and I thank you for that. Brian, you are a pain in the ass.
[laughing]
But you're a very smart man, and you ask the questions that many of our council don't know what to ask. And they get angry with you, but I don't. I'm very proud of you. So, as you can see, I think we have a fabulous council, and I think the city's going to go far. One thing I want to tell you is there's two people that never get recognized, ever. Sohail is one. Sohail took my calls for the last 40 years, 50?
[laughing]
Daytime, nighttime. And I'd ask, I'd say, hey, I want to bounce something off your head. And actually, not to be crude, but he'd go, oh, shit.
[laughing]
And we made some really good decisions, and I couldn't have made them without you. I was very smart about engineering, because I had you. And Randy Pintock is, he's like a brother to me. And he kept me honest, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
And since we haven't officially adjourned, I'm going to expect a quarter in Dave Prey's cursed jars, because you're...
[laughing]
So you can contribute to the fund. I would like to invite everybody to a short reception across the hall for Councilman Workman. Please join us. And get out and vote tomorrow. Make sure you thank your election workers and our city clerk, Shane, for all the tremendous work and hard work that they're doing, leading up to this and through tomorrow. So, thank you. And motion to adjourn by Councilman Workman.
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Workman, supported by Councilwoman O'Neal. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Robbins?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Webb?
Yes.
For the last time, Councilman Workman?
Yes.
Councilmember Ganaga?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Yes.
Councilmember Prey?
Yes.
Thank you. Adjourned at 7:41.